Good evening. I would like to call the special meeting of the city council to order. Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Sarno.
Here.
Mayor Protem Zemara.
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez.
Here. Thank you. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda. The deputy city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have an opportunity once the deputy city clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. Deputy city clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Yes, Mayor, we have one person present to speak, Stefan Wandel.
Thank you. Stefan.
Madam Mayor, I think maybe they wanted to speak after the presentation, so I think there was two opportunities, so maybe we'll wait for that.
Yes, yes, sure.
The next person that has their hand up via Zoom is, they just lowered Lang Catrel.
And my guess that Lang probably will also want to be at the end of the presentation.
Okay. Oh, sure.
No more hands.
I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Item number four, city council consent agenda. We have one consent item. Agreement with the TBWBH props and measures for public outreach and consulting services related to a potential business operation tax measure. Is there a motion for the approval of item number four?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number five, study session, presentation of potential changes to the city's business operation tax ordinances. I would like to call on Director of Finance, Travis Hickey.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. We're here tonight to talk about the study that the city has been working on with respect to the potential changes to the business license tax ordinance. So just kind of wanted to give a recap of where the city's been the last several years financially and kind of what brings us here tonight before we get into the presentation from our consultant. So, you know, going back prior to 2018, the city had, was in a position of having ongoing deficits. We had a structural deficit. We balanced our budget through loans that we had made to the redevelopment agency and were in the time period where we were receiving payments for those loans that kept the city going. But once we got really up to the 2018, those loans were being paid off and we were sort of already working on a long-term solution to that, which was our measure Y. And March of 2018 is when Ray Cruz, the city manager, came on board and really we spent that. I apologize in advance because I kind of like to just talk from my head. I made notes and I want to make sure I don't forget anything, but I also just want to kind of talk here. So in 2018, when he started, it was really, his first day on board was, we got to do the sales tax measure. We were working on that, worked with the council. The council approved putting that ordinance on the ballot in November of 2018. Ray, along with myself, did a number of presentations to community members, including the Chamber of Commerce, who ultimately supported the measure Y. Measure Y was critical for the city. Without that, we would have had significant cuts in our general fund and like any city, our general fund accounts, public safety within our general fund accounts for half or more than half of our expenditures. And so certainly we would have looked across the organization for cuts, but without that, we would have certainly impacted our public safety. And so we were fortunate that the community passed the measure 75% of the vote. As I mentioned, the Chamber of Commerce supported our measure. They understood the position the city was in and the effect this would have on public safety. So, you know, during that campaign, I think it's also important to remember that, you know, the one kind of issue that was out there that we talked to people about that would, that this measure would not address is long-term infrastructure funding, long-term CIP funding. So when back in the redevelopment days, when our redevelopment agency was getting over $30 million a year in tax increment, you know, much of that went to pay off bonds and debt service, but a very significant portion of that, many millions of dollars, went into our CIP program. And that was our main source of funding for CIPs. And so we knew that the priority was to get the general fund balanced, but that the one unresolved issue would be long-term funding for our infrastructure. Through, you know, all of the changes post-redevelopment included an increase in our utility users tax, which resulted in the city committing to a minimum level of funding of just under $3 million a year for CIPs. And the city has done that consistently since 2012, including putting additional amounts in when we had it. And so even though we've been able to kind of chip away at that, at that need, you know, we still have this long-term issue of not being able to have a long-term dedicated source for, that we can carve out of the general fund for our ongoing CIP needs. And so when I talk about CIP, you know, we, there's a lot of different things that fit under that, but we're talking city facilities, parks, roads, bridges, storm drains, you know, roads, it's everything. And so we're not talking about any one thing, but these are all parts of the city's critical infrastructure that, you know, if we don't get something long-term to keep up with these things that we need to do with our infrastructure, then we're going to see them deteriorate further. And so, so really that got us, once we moved past measure Y, looking at, okay, what are we doing long-term to address this, this funding need? And then, of course, in March of 2020 is where we had just completed our first year of measure Y, starting to feel good about where the city was financially. And then we hit COVID, just like everybody else in the world. Things kind of came to a halt. We shut down. We, a lot of credit goes to our employees who did not receive or really even ask for a cola for that fiscal first year of the COVID. So they were certainly part of the solution to getting through that. There was a lot of uncertainty. And then as we got into COVID, we were pleasantly surprised that the impacts were not as great on our city as, as other cities. And so our, really, we felt more secure now two years later where our general fund is, whereas other cities were hit much harder, who were more heavily, have, you know, public shopping retail bases or hospitality, tourism, travel-type economies. Fortunately, we don't have that. We were not hit as hard. And so just, you know, over the last year, are starting to feel like we can turn the corner and start readdressing this issue about long-term funding to help our general fund keep up with our, our infrastructure needs. And so with that, in about July of last year, I will step back even before that. Council knows that our priority setting session last year, this was one of the top priorities, was, was this long-term source of funding. And in July of that year, the council authorized the firm of Hinderleider Delamas to conduct a study of our business license ordinance. Backing up again for a second, the, as we were working on this, we looked at a number of different options. We, we had our consultants from HDL, Bill Kelly, city staff. We looked at a number of different options for potential revenue sources. Looking at the different pros and cons of each one, we decided to pursue looking at modification of our business license ordinance. Our business license tax ordinance is about 30 years old, has not been modified, is based on number of employees, where most cities will base it on gross revenue. So we knew it needed to be looked at no matter what. And so we thought we would look at that and see what potential it had to, to address these other needs. And so, so HDL began working on that. We've, we've, they've completed their study and so that brings us here tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Eric Myers with HDL to walk the council through the presentation. The report that they did is attached to your agenda packet, the full report. But so this will be a brief presentation. He'll go through pretty quickly the results of that and hopefully leave lots of time for discussion. At the end of this, obviously, we'll be looking for some input from the council about, about where, where we go from there based, based on what we see in here. So I think with that, I'm happy to take any questions or I can turn it over to Eric and have him start with the presentation. We good? Do we have Eric?
Yes, I'm, I'm here, Travis. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Eric.
Okay, great. Let me get my screen here. And just let me know if you can see that screen, okay? The slide deck.
Not just yet, Eric.
Okay, is that coming through at all at this point?
I don't think it's on your end, Eric. Give us just one second.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, it's up now, Eric.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm thankful for the privilege of being with you virtually tonight. And would welcome questions throughout the presentation, although I realize, given that I'm remote, it might be easier for the technology services team to switch the mics after the end, but I'm happy to be interrupted as we go through this. And as Travis indicated, our goal will be to hit some of the key points in the study and then leave ample time for discussion and questions. So with that said, let me go ahead and move here to the question that sort of motivated the study from our perspective. And that was, how can the business license rate structure be modernized to generate revenue for critical public services? Two key components to that question. One, how might we modernize? Again, as Travis has already mentioned, I think the last significant revisions to the city's business license tax were about 27 years ago. And in the broader context, not only of modernizing, but helping to generate revenue for the critical public services. And I, I should say at the outset, I apologize for my voice. We've had some wonderful weather, but it's wreaked havoc with my allergies. So I apologize for the quality of my voice. So let's take a look, if we could, at the old structure and sort of why this matters, that the, that the city's current structure dating back to about 1995. Why, why does that matter, right? It doesn't necessarily mean that just because something is older, that it's, it's not working. But the city is using an older sort of per-unit and employee model. And one of the things that that does is it can cause a mismatch between what the city is taxing and where the economy is actually going. So on this slide, what you can see, for example, is since 1973, labor productivity. Excuse me. And the reason that matters is if you're taxing on the basis of a per-employee basis and labor productivity is increasing, as it has been over the last several decades, what you're doing is you're losing out on that per-employee productivity. So one employee may be producing, not, not saying that these numbers bear this out, but they may be producing twice as much as somebody was two decades ago in terms of their ability to produce value for the company and to help produce revenue for the company. And yet, if you're just taxing on the basis of headcount, you're not seeing that growth within your revenue base and business license. Similar story for GDP. So we took just a quick look at the real GDP for California in $2019. Again, you can see that over the time period from 1997, which is a couple of years after your most substantive, your latest substantive revision to your code, through 2019, so pre-COVID, what we're seeing is a little bit over a doubling of the GDP in California. But again, with additional productivity per employee and growth in revenues, a per-employee or per-unit tax isn't going to necessarily allow the city to participate in some of that growth in order to provide critical services. So that's why the old structure matters and why it's part of the conversation we're having around your, your business tax. In addition, as you can see from a map that we pulled from, I think, your, your most recent general plan, the city is heavily industrial and mixed use, as you can see in sort of the predominance of the purple and reddish colors here. And those, again, those sorts of uses may not always be captured by other types of tax that helps the city then provide additional revenue for critical, critical services. And again, we can see this in, in the amount of revenue that's yielded by, I mean, Santa Fe Springs is a vibrant industrial city. It's got a strong economic base. You heard Travis talk about the, the way that you were able to weather the, the COVID-19 storm as a community and as a city. And yet, what we're seeing is a yield from the business license tax revenue is, is, is quite low. As you can see in the details of the study, it's one of the lowest in the region and in the comparison set that we, we pulled together for you. And that's really a direct result of taxing on the basis of per-employee and per-unit. So one of the first things we wanted to do then in the study and asking ourselves how to address the impact and maybe revise the business license to allow the city to derive more revenue for critical services, was to say, what happens if you keep the basic structure of per-employee, per-unit, but just do a simple increase in the business license tax? And as you can see here on this slide, the short answer is it doesn't get you that much. And again, that's being driven primarily by the fact that the existing formulas are capturing the number of employees and are not necessarily capturing the amount of revenue and productivity that's going on using those employees. So even at a 60% increase, while, again, nothing to turn up one's nose at, it is not a significant change in the revenues, even increasing the tax at 60%. And so what that led us to do in this, in the study is to focus then instead on changing the structure of the tax around what we consider a more modern structure, namely the gross receipts tax. This tax looks at the gross receipts or gross revenue to a business and uses a simple base tax and then a rate of anywhere between $1 and $3 per thousand typically is what we see. For, and that just depends on what kind of business it is, because certain businesses will have different profit margins, but, and then we go into detail in that in the study, but basically the gross receipts tax allows you to scale the tax burden to the size of the business. It allows you to capture increased productivity and use that to continue to build the vibrant community and services that you've become known for. And so it radically restructures, but it does so in a way that more closely aligns the tax to the types of business activity that you might be seeing. We looked at Model 2, 3, 4, and 5 in the tax study. They're all variations on the theme of gross receipts with different rates, perhaps different thresholds. In some cases, for example, Model 2, a very simple rate, $1 per thousand of gross receipts with an exemption for, you know, the first 25K basically gets you to more than double the current revenue. Whereas another model with rates, say where we do 1,000 to 5,000 per gross receipts with property rental compliance could, you know, put you on the order of about eight times what the city's existing revenue is. And again, these are estimates, not for budget purposes, but you get in, in that arena, you get the size and the direction of the changes. Then finally, we took in Model 6 in our study and said, okay, given the need for critical services within the city of Santa Fe Springs, how could we, in addition to simply restructuring the tax, also make sure that we're, we're capturing what we need to from the industrial business activities? And we brought in a square footage-based tax on industrial business activities. And you can see that that significantly changes the revenue numbers as well here. So, you know, you would have a significant amount of revenue that's being driven by just restructuring, which are these lines here in the presentation. And then the industrial business activities, about 17% of your base right now is our estimate, would have, would carry a significant share of funding those critical services for the city. And then just by way of information, we kind of wanted to break out how the existing sort of classification of those 1,100 or so businesses that would fall into that industrial business activity. Most of them fall here within the wholesale and manufacturing categories. And then a handful of others that are classified in some various settings. So they would be subject to the square footage tax, allowing, again, for that heavy use of services and infrastructure to be reflected in the tax structure as well. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and pause and open up for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Eric. Madam Mayor, that concludes our, our presentation. So we would be happy to take council comments and questions and, you know, go from there.
Madam Mayor, I just want to add a couple of comments. You know, you see the industrial uses. I just wanted to make it clear that we did have a working group with the chamber. Mike Foley's here. We had a lot of the members of the big industrial owners of those properties, the brokers of the properties, to discuss our, our needs for all services, including infrastructure, and letting them know that we are a low-property tax city. They were very surprised about that. Let them know that there, you know, there's issues with gas taxes due to our population, that that's not paying for their fair share. And also with regards to trying to get one-time monies from, from grants and things from COVID relief funds. That was going to be one-time money that wouldn't help the long-term. So with the structures, you know, we, we, when being all the way back, we couldn't believe it was February, I was talking to Mike earlier today with the whole group. And so I think there was a lot of cooperation, getting the word out, what, what the needs were. This is something we've been aware of, was a council priority in their goal-setting session back in May of last year. So this was found to be, we believe, the best mechanism, because we asked the industry groups, was there any options they had? And they, they said, well, wait to see what happens with this study. And so I feel that the consultants did what they did, what they, what we were told them to do. We hope we have something that's before you, that you can start a deliberation, the starting point. And we'll, we'll let the consultants and, and staff work through it, but just want to give that little background also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First off, does our council have any questions? For Travis or our consultant?
Yeah, of course, you know, I'm a business owner in the city also. And of course, you know, I do that, Eric, it's, we do need to restructure or, you know, get a bit more modern with our, our business license fee. One question I had was, I talked about the, the revenues, gross revenues, and that's how we're going to apportion the taxes. Is that's going to be stated or there going to be an audit or how is that going to fit into the model?
You know, just like virtually all of our tax systems in our country, whether it's state, local, federal, they all, the foundation is all in a self-reported system. We, you know, last Monday, we all had our tax returns due. You, you fill out your, your tax return and that, you state that. So it would be that way. But just like other taxing agencies, we have mechanisms to validate those numbers, to enforce those numbers, to double-check those numbers. And so, you know, part of our, part of the council action, when we hired HDL to do this study, was simultaneously to have them assist the city with our business license tax administration. And so they are currently working under our current model, assisting us with the business licenses. And part of their service is to do the enforcement side of that. And so, you know, certainly there's not a, an ability for the city to do 100% verification, but we are able to do substantially more with HDL's help now. HDL is also our consultant on our, our sales tax revenues as well. And so there's certainly access to things like sales tax returns, which go a long way in terms of validating revenue numbers reported on business licenses.
Do we have any other council with questions? Absorb it.
I actually have, I just wanted to show.
Sure.
I think it's a great idea of a start of us definitely modernizing our business license fee schedule. But I think there's two parts to this. I think there's a part that our business license needs to be upgraded, because like a lot of things we've done in the city, we've kept things simple and easy for our businesses, for our residents. And we need to start getting up to the times to, you know, capture some of the, the money that we need from our businesses and from our residents based on the way we are living today. The second thing is when Ray had talked about goal setting. Our goal-setting was to capture taxes on the people that are not paying their fair share of taxes. So I think as we're doing this right now, we need to make sure that we're understanding we're taxing twice, in a sense. We are taxing the people that are already paying their sales tax. And then we are capturing the other aspect of a warehouse or a wholesaler or logistics company. We are capturing those. And it's a, it's a very tricky situation, because I think the people that are already paying those sales tax, and I know everybody knows how I feel about this, we don't need to, in a sense, double tax them, because they're paying their fair share already. So with this, it's a great start, but I would like to see us enhance and make sure that we are taking care of the people that are already paying their fair share of taxes and capture the taxes, what we originally set out to do. Capture the people that are not paying, the logistics company. And I think we have a lot of businesses that are okay with trying to help us capture. And Mike Foley Goodman, they are willing here to help, because they understand the situation that we are in for our streets, our sidewalks, to help repair those streets and sidewalks that we need to help to get. So great start to it, but I think we have a lot of details that we need to start capturing, because I don't, just plain and simple, I, I don't want to see us capture sales tax businesses and have them being taxed in both sets. So that's just my opinion.
So, Councilmember Sarno, your message comes through loud and clear. I think we all feel that way to some degree. You know, we have a business base here. In particular, our business base that supplies sales tax to the cities are by far our largest revenue source. We wouldn't be the city we are without those businesses. So I don't think anyone is going to say, we don't hear you on that point. We, we are dealing with a number of challenges that will make essentially what you're talking about very difficult or at this point, not a, a solution that we've found. There's a, a legal basis that would prevent us from, say, exempting businesses that supply X amount of sales tax. And we've explored that and, and it would apply, whether it was the business license option or a parcel tax or, you know, other types of taxes. Anytime you have a kind of credit on one tax, because you're paying another tax, you're going to have a legal problem with that.
I got to, but on that, and I know we're going to go deeper into this, and I'm sorry, but just by what you're saying, would you be able to check a box if your sales tax revenues, this is the, the form that you would fill out? If you're non-sales tax, would you be able to fill out the same form, but just a different rate?
I mean, that's a pretty specific legal question. I mean, we can, this is, this is an ongoing thing. We can, we can get more legal guidance on that. I don't want to speak out of turn. I, the only, in my understanding, I'm not an attorney. My understanding is the only way that that kind of option would be possible would be, it would have to apply to every sales tax producer from our top twenty-five, our top one hundred, to our bottom three thousand. And is that fair that, that the guy who's giving us a hundred dollars a year in sales tax gets the low rate? And another business doesn't?
Well, it would be because it's based on grocery receipts. So regardless of the fact, it's grocery receipts. So it's equal across the board, whether that person is a sales tax provider or not. The rate of if they're paying their sales taxes or not, but having that grocery receipts across the board is what makes everything equal across.
Yeah. And to be clear, the Model Six that Eric outlined is the hybrid model that includes both grocery receipts and a square footage tax. And so most of our large industrial businesses that, most of our businesses that produce a significant amount of sales tax are in that industrial category. And so their tax is more likely to be calculated based on a square footage rate than a grocery receipts rate. I'm talking hypothetically, if this was the direction we went. And so, so we just have to be careful with that. There could be different rates, just depending on the type of business you are. But I mean, that being said, we can certainly look into any legal options where we can feel comfortable that we will withstand a legal challenge that would achieve what you're trying, what you're talking about. I, and I know we've talked before, but, you know, for the purposes of our business community. And I mean, I haven't gotten to know you, sir, very well, but I have, laying with Goodman and Mike and Kathy and Wendy. I, you know, we've, I have it in here for the business community. So, you know, this is at the heart, like we've talked about. With all of us, I think we all recognize this missing need for the city. And, and, you know, we're just trying to find a solution for that. But specifically on this issue of the sales tax producers versus the non-producers, like I said before, that without the sales tax producers, we're not the city we are. But I think it is important to remember also that sales tax is paid by the customer, not the individual business. Whereas the business license tax is paid by all individual businesses. And so I, I mean, we've talked before, so I know what you're going to say, but I just want to make that point. And, you know, and I know in our conversations through Measure Y, maybe some businesses would say, no, we pay it because we buy more computers, we buy more furniture, we buy all of that. That's true. The Measure Y applies to all of that, and those businesses pay that. But so does every other business, even if they're not a sales tax producer per se. You know, we have industrial businesses who don't produce sales tax that we receive as a city. But when they buy computers, they buy furniture, they buy equipment, they're taxed on that as well, and we receive that money. So all the businesses pay that type, that portion of the sales.
Perfect examples are, you have Wendy that has a business here in the community. And if her business has to charge more for a chair than the person that is in the next city over, they potentially lose a customer because of that. And whether we're saying it's not taxed by them, it's a, it's their losses, our losses. Because if they're not buying from them, that means we're not getting the revenue from that. So when we say that the businesses don't pay for the taxes, everybody pays for it some way or another. So we can't just always look at it in a sense of, well, we're not directly taxing them, but they're passing that cost on to their consumer. And if that consumer does not want to go to that business anymore, what happens? We lose that consumer and that revenue source. So it does consume all of us in some type of way or another.
I mean, I don't disagree with that. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah, no, I know.
In the difference of how the sales tax works versus the business license tax. I, and to your point, you know, that was a major concern when we, when we went for Measure Y, is the impact it would have on businesses. And, I mean, I'm happy to say, and I hope the businesses are happy to see, we haven't seen that. We haven't seen that impact to the businesses, that concern of people going somewhere else or going out to the inland empire because their sales tax is lower. Our businesses are doing great, and that's a great thing.
But our consumers are tired of paying the fair share of taxes. And that's, and that's one of the things that I don't think this city wants to become. Every time that we, we have a problem with fixing our streets or parks or sidewalks or whatever it is, we have to tax our way out of it because the original concept of Joe Angel, Juanita, myself, and I can't speak for John and Annette because I was not on the council when they were here, but it was to generate revenues, to have everybody pay their fair share of equal opportunity for contributing to the city to get these things done. Logistics companies, wholesalers that don't pay the sales tax, we were trying to grab that aspect of that business to make sure we figure out how to pay their fair share. Now, the business license fees and all that, that's definitely a necessity, that's across the board. But we need to have, make sure that we look at how we are charging sales tax providers, non-sales tax providers in a way to make it equal across the board. That's, that's my biggest concern. I know that's yours too, Travis. And that's why we're here having this meeting, because we need to figure it out.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, and to state that point, I see Wendy Meter out there from Tangram. And we had, so that was the objective of this council, and it was all five of you who wanted to look at that, and we did. And as you heard, no matter what the tax we use, that legal hurdle is there. And maybe more could be stated by our city attorney. And unless we find some alternative, and we'll continue to do that, that is, that is the hurdle. And it hurts me to say that because that was not what the objective was, but that's what we found out. And I told that to Wendy personally when we were looking into this, and to all the businesses out there. So we hear you loud and clear, but that's the hurdle we have. We haven't found an alternative for it or for any of the tax we look at. And that is an issue, and we're not going to hide that from you or hide it from the business community that's here. So I want to make sure that's clear.
All right. Does any other council have a comment?
I have something to say. You know, and this is where we're looking at, you know, looking at the business community to actually step up to, you know, when it comes to our attorneys and stuff like that, we have our one city attorney, of course, we have their firm. But this is where you guys can actually look at your guys' groups to see what type of alternative you can help us get to. Because this did start off as a truck tax. Many, many years ago, it was just a thought, I think, what, five, six years ago? I think I brought it to Jay and I brought it to Mr. Moore, and it was just about taxing the logistical companies. It was, you know, we were trying to go after those individuals that don't pay their fair share, and like Jay said, the manufacturing. And of course, this is where now, we don't want to get stuck into a situation that we have to tax if we don't get the help. You know, we have a deadline that we have to meet, and this is where it can't be another, you know, another general plan thing. This is where we have to look at the community and, you know, looking at you guys because you guys have the financial means also to look at, you know, some attorneys and, and, you know, get some, you know, engineers to get some, some kind of input that to help us out. You know, help us out now because when we get to that destination, it doesn't force our hand differently. So, you know, and like Jay said, it did start off, you know, as a truck tax from the very beginning. It was a truck tax versus the logistical companies. And of course, we know how that turned, you know, once we started talking about a moratorium. I think right away, I think we all started getting our phones. You know, people were calling us left and right to talk to us. And then eventually, but it's still, the message was heard too because it brought people to the table. Because all in all, we have, we have our residents, our business community. But, you know, when we look at the things that we're trying to capture, you know, you look at our streets. I mean, we pay into, you know, over ten million dollars when it comes to our streets. And that's something that we as a city and our residents can't afford, you know. So we have to look at the business community because these logistical companies or these trucks, you know, that have the trucks, the vans, everything they have. And guess what? The wear and tear that they put on these streets. Well, guess what streets we're always usually fixing? It's usually the business streets. And, you know, and yet they're not paying for any of it. And this is why it's to capture that money to say, hey, you know, because when it comes to the residents, you know, I know in this last campaign, talking to the residents, a lot of them were just saying, hey, look at all these potholes. Look at all these streets. Look at the wear and tear. Look at the traffic. You know, we had COVID, but still in Santa Fe Springs, it looked like we still had lots of cars out there, you know. So why, you know, this is a city that's just constantly moving when it comes to our business community. So when, when people were talking, they're saying, look, it's something that can go, you know, on a ballot fifty-plus-one, and this is where we're asking for help now because guess what? Fifty-plus-one in an election campaign is pretty much saying, hey, residents, are you guys, you're not going to pay the tax, but we need help from the businesses to say, hey, they're going to pay to help, to help provide for our streets, help provide for our public safety, whether it be we can hire some two new officers to do some patrolling. You know, whatever it takes, that's what we have to do. We have to put more cameras, more signage, and this is what all that is going for. So, I mean, I don't know if you guys agree with that, but like I said, that's where we were at with the truck tax. It was more towards the logistical companies manufacturing because they didn't pay their fair share. And of course, you know, and that's all I have to say. So I don't know if anybody disagrees with that, but that's, that's how it started off. And from there, it didn't make the ballot because we're doing the, we're doing our other tax. And we focused on that as a, as a city. And I know Jay, Juanita, myself were here during that time. And, and that was when we're trying to pass Measure Y. While, you know, passing Measure Y, then now, you know, we couldn't do two taxes at once. And this is where we're just trying to catch up to what the needs are for the act for the city. And right now, one of the strongest needs is public safety and our streets. Thank you, guys.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to confirm what the Mayor Protem just said. Absolutely correct. When I got here four years ago, there was a talk about a bay tax, a truck tax. And I never forgot that in the four years that I was going to the chamber retreats, letting them know this is something that's still an issue, something that we're going to need to pursue. And, you know, and that's exactly why we wanted to be totally transparent. And we met with the industrial groups, this was actually going to hit. And we've been meeting since February of 2021, and I think it's been a long working relationship. I, it was, there was a lot of dialogue, a lot of, a lot of like, we can't believe you're not getting that from the state or from federal government and that we pay and you're not getting, you're only getting six to seven cents on the dollar. So I, so I brought up all that history that you brought up, Mayor Protem. And people in this audience, people probably listening in, said they were ready to step up and do that. And, you know, the one issue, the sales tax issue was one thing that we, we didn't promise, but we made a commitment, we looked into it, and we gave, got that answer. But, you know, when we asked, asked that exact question, Mayor Protem, what do you have, first time ideas? And they threw out some and told me some that wouldn't work. So we said, hey, we're looking at, there's a lot of things we work with our consultants with. And this was the option that we were looking for to, you know, modernize our overall tax system, but also deal with those logistics, warehousing and truck yards that are not paying their fair share. So it's hitting that. And again, we have no secret motive, and we want the council to have, be totally informed when they hear from their residents, hear from their business members, and we're ready to follow suit where you want to go with this. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may? We are known as a business-friendly city, and we got, we have to do this. We all know we have to do this. But we're having the study session with the chamber here because we are one big group. And I personally think, like Jay said, like Joe Angel said, they are those groups that aren't paying their fair share. The truck tax, we understand that. But myself, and I think I could speak for all of us, the last people we want to hurt are the people that make us who we are. We do have our residents, and yeah, they do pay taxes. But every time we actually need it or we need help, the chamber's always stepped in. And my personal feeling is, yes, we have to do this. We have to figure out a way like the general plan. But I feel that every time we have to do this, we run to the chamber and for the businesses to say, help us out, bail us out. At some point, I feel that too much is too much. And I'm afraid that we're going to lose our business. We're going to lose the relationship we have with the chamber. The businesses are in there, Tangram, Swatme. I mean, there's different types of businesses that are going to get to the point where, like, say, screw it, we help you guys with the Y. I mean, how many chambers actually in support of Measure Y and help us and to succeed? I feel that we do need to look over this, and we do need to do it. The business license does, does need to be fixed because we're antiquated on this. But I know there's always lawyers involved, and there's always attorneys, and you can't do this, you can't do that. But I feel and I hope that with the group that we have here, we can come with a resolution. I mean, we're all, all of us are on board that we wouldn't be a business-friendly city, because we'd be hypocrites if we said that, because we're really good at asking you guys for money for everything else. I mean, plain and simple, we are. And it has to be the point where, yes, you guys have your businesses, and yes, you guys make their money. But at some point, we have to meet in the middle where we shouldn't be taxing this much on the, on the people that are feeding us, people that are paying our taxes, people that are actually helping getting our roads fixed. So I really hope from all of us here, I mean, we're here, we helped out with the general plan. You guys jumped on in and helped us with the general plan. Hopefully, we'll be able to figure something out so we don't tax the people that already pay enough and do enough with us. Because the last thing I want is our chamber to be like, we're tired of this council and not be involved or not help us, and we help them. So I really hope that we can work as a team to do something. I mean, I know there's a lot of legalities, but I really hope that we can do something so we're not taxing the people that don't deserve that big tax. Thank you.
Thank you. All valid comments. Are there any more? I want to thank everybody, every, every, our colleagues up here, everything. I agree with everything that they're saying. We don't want to, we don't want to overtax, but we need solutions. We need ideas, and that's why we're here today, so we could come up with some resolutions. So with that said, I would like to see if we have any of our public, our business, industrial or public that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, Mayor, we'll call up Stefan Wandel first, as he is present in person.
Thank you, Stefan.
Good afternoon. My name is Stefan Wandel. I'm an executive with Golden Springs. And first, a couple of thoughts and then probably a number of questions, if that's okay. You know, our company has been in the city for probably over forty years at this point. We've tried to partner every chance we have. We do care about the city. We do care about its future. You know, we've invested on numerous occasions, very substantial sums into the city because we want to be here for the very long term. In terms of, of road repairs, yes, I think as the city manager pointed out, we've had a discussion for a year. I think many of us have repeatedly told the city manager we're very willing to help contribute to what is a problem. We realized that may be a little bit of a departure, you know, when we built Golden Springs, there was a development agreement with the city, which of course, Wayne will remind me, it expired a two years ago. But that said, the intent was that we were going to build this beautiful project. The city was going to maintain the roads. But that said aside, we're still willing to help. We're willing to contribute additional dollars. We, of course, would like this to be reasonable. We don't think there's an unlimited amount of money that we can contribute to this. We do try to buy locally. We just signed two very large contracts with Tangram, which by the way, are really, really good company to work with, amazing service. So, yeah. I understand. So there should be some sales taxes coming your way, was my point. But we're going to continue to try to buy locally. We're here for the long term. We obviously want to really understand what are the options with respect to, and what the council and the city is considering with respect to this proposal. So I've got two pages of questions. I promised I won't ask all of them. But it tells you that we've taken the time and the effort to go through it. Um, but it tells you that we've taken the time and the effort to go through it. Uh, I think if I, you know, some of these models, I think we can support pretty quickly and pretty clearly, uh, but we would like to understand more. And frankly, one of these models, particularly the last one, is concerning us quite substantially. Um, you know, I, I think ultimately what we'd like to understand is, is really what revenue model, if you know where the city wants to go, or if not the model, but how much money is the city targeting to collect? Uh, I think that would be one of those, um, really ultimately where the city wants to go. The report does a good job to share where is the city, uh, license, uh, currently relative to other cities. We agree it's low. But some of the proposals will make it, if, if not the highest tax city in the, in the state, one of the top two or three. So is that really where, in Model Six particularly, is that really where the city wants to go? The other piece, I think if, if the city wants to go towards a gross receipts, uh, uh, arrangement, uh, we really would like to understand what that is. What is the definition of that? We couldn't find out what that meant. Uh, for those of us who are property owners, what does that include? Is it our rents? Is it our expense reimbursement when our tenants pay for property taxes that we have to pay the county? Does, does that mean we have to pay tax on that? Uh, and then for those of us as Golden Springs is, Golden Springs is actually, uh, quite a large number of business. We do work across the country. We do a lot of work, uh, that brings revenues from outside the city and outside the state. Uh, so are those going to be revenues that will be considered for taxation? Uh, that's important for us to know as we plan our long-term business. What else? Um, again, I'm uh, you know, I think there's other questions we have on, on timing. When is the city looking to make, uh, a decision? And, uh, if this is going to be the, the ballot box, we're curious to find out what is the timing the city is working on? We would like to help get to an arrangement that everybody can feel comfortable with. We would hate to show up at the eleventh hour. If we can understand what timelines are, maybe we can, uh, help, uh, work, uh, you know, cooperatively and, and, and we all want to, we all want ultimately the same goal. So, um, I could probably go on for quite a while, but why don't I stop here? Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan. And do you have those, you have those questions with you? And Travis, would you like to answer some of those? Or if you don't have the answers, maybe our consultant would. And I'd like to see your questions too. We can make a copy of them or you can email them to me. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Very valid questions, by the way.
Eric can, uh, join in if he has something to add, but I, I would just say that I think tonight was designed to be an introduction to what they, uh, came up with in terms of options. I think that those are some, uh, really good questions. And I, I think as we get some feedback and direction from the council about where we want to go, then those sorts of questions take shape and really it comes down to the final language that's in the, uh, proposed ordinance that would be brought to the council. So um, there is flexibility in terms of answering how those questions go. Um, but it, it really depends on the, kind of the uh, feeling of the council in terms of where we go from here. Eric, I know you're, I think you're there somewhere. If you have anything to add, feel free to.
I was going to say one thing on, on this, the amount, as, as the mayor pro said, says, you know, we had a, a truck tax, um, study done last August and it showed that we have a ninety-six million dollar deficit, um, for roadwork. And it would take ten million dollars a year to get on a ten-year cycle. But this is a general tax. We, we, we're feeling there being, not paying a fair share for roadwork, um, issues with public safety, parks, everything when it comes to some of the industrial users. So it's a matter of really what the council feels comfortable with, on what they want to try to capture. And so we, we gave the models, so you have options. And so, um, that answer optically, we're going to hear a lot of feedback, um, about from the, from the community, from the residents. And, you know, you can decide after hearing all the, the testimony. And I feel this is the first of a, a number of meetings to talk through this, but ultimately, once you get the data and, and input, um, you can decide what level you want to go at with the different models. And, and I think the consultant can talk more about what a gross receipts tax is and how it's taxed.
I got a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
Before you go through. So we will have another study session, obviously. I think would be great for us as council is to the way you guys broke it down, but maybe we can, uh, figure out who are the sales tax providers for this, for the communities, um, as an, as a number and where they land in some of these areas to kind of see how we want to then distribute maybe some of the way that we're doing it. I mean, I think gross receipts is, is the way to go, obviously. But I also wanted kind of weed out some of those, uh, sales tax providers that maybe we can figure out.
And Jay, um, just to let you know, as long as, when you say about weeding out the tax providers.
Not weeding out, but.
Yeah, but.
Knowing who they are.
But I know Ivy's probably going to tell you, we can't give that information by number, but like one through a hundred, but they can be mixed, then they can give who are those top one hundred. They, they just can't give it in order.
By a number, we can't do it by name.
No, we can't do it by order either.
I, I was going to say, there are legal implications and we have to make sure that this, uh, however we structure this business operation tax, it needs to, it needs to meet legal parameters. We're going to study that.
Three hundred and fifty, we're not given a specific how somebody pays.
Aside.
Three hundred and fifty sales tax.
Aside from tax information being confidential, w- we may be limited in our ability to mix these conversations between a business license tax and sales tax. So we understand what the intent is and we will work and, and study where those limits are. And we'll work with our consultant and we'll bring back to you what we can.
Yeah, that, that's, I just figured she was going to say something, so.
Travis. Uh, I, so what I'm understanding, what I'm hearing right now is that, uh, our businesses, they're paying taxes, but we add this, whatever, when we decide to add, it goes across the board. Is that what I'm hearing you say, uh, or our consultant say, that it goes across the board? That we can't differentiate, well, this person pays a lot of tax. This person doesn't pay, so we can eliminate some taxes on that. We have to do this, whatever we decide has to go across the board.
At this point, we haven't found an option that would allow us to give a credit or exempt certain businesses who provide other kinds of taxes. That being said, the, the Model Six that the consultant presented sort of has two different models within that model, one based on gross receipts, one based on square footage. So there would be, if we went forward with that model, a need to classify businesses into one of those two categories. And then those particular businesses would pay that tax based on how they were classified.
Got it.
So generally, you know, um, professional companies, contractors, retail businesses are going to be in the gross receipts. Industrial type businesses are going to be in the per square footage model using Model Six.
This might be a dumb question, maybe I'll make that, but why is it a tax? Why are we talking about? That's basically, we're, we're charging a fee, we're not charging a tax.
But it's a good question. And current, our current business is called a business occupancy tax ordinance is, is where it comes from. So our current business license is a tax. It's, it's really a business occupancy tax. Some cities have business license fees. And the key difference is in order for it to be called a fee legally or be used as a fee, it can only recover your costs of enforcement over your business activities. So in other cities where you have heavy regulation of businesses and you have costs that go into regulating businesses, you have, you can recover those costs through your business license fee. A fee can only be equal to your cost to administer whatever that program is. Whereas a tax is a general tax voted onto the electorate and can be used for any general purpose.
And Councilmember Sarno, even in some cities where it's called a business license fee, legally it is a tax.
It is a tax.
If it is for, if we call it a fee and it's only to regain certain, uh, compensation for what we actually are putting into that fee, why is there such a wide range of difference of, of monies based on different cities, the way that it's grouped? I mean, you're, you're talking, you have one city that charges a hundred and ten dollars or a hundred and eighteen dollars. And then you have another city that charges three thousand dollars. I mean, you know, so.
Councilmember Sarno, un- unlike with the sales tax, where there are certain limits, there's a lot of flexibility in how you structure your business.
That's what I'm trying to get at. So we do have flexibility on, that's exactly what I'm trying to come to is we do have flexibility in understanding what we're going to charge for a fee.
Rather than. Absolutely. Uh, you know, you'll, you'll recall with measure Y and the sales tax, we received special legislation from the, uh, uh, the state, there, there's a cap on what kind of a rate. We couldn't just put a four percent sales tax rate on the ballot. There's limitations on that. With the business license tax, there, there really is no, um, outside regulations on how we structure it or what that rate is. Other than those kind of things we talked about that might prevent us from giving a credit for sales tax or doing it in a way that prefers one group of businesses over another. And that's where the legal challenges come in. But outside of that, we have a lot of flexibility to craft how this tax would be, um, construed.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Travis. And I would like to know if there's any other persons wishing to speak.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Lang Cottrell via Zoom.
Wendy.
Lang.
Oh, Lang.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, do you have feedback? No, we're good. Hey, well, yeah, sorry. First of all, I want to apologize for not being there in person. I, I had a pre-commitment, uh, this evening that it would, didn't allow me to get up there, but please, uh, understand that, uh, this issue is, uh, very important to us at Goodman as, uh, investors and landowners and long-term landowners up in Santa Fe Springs, uh, similar to to Stefan and the Thrifty Group, as well as a number of other industrial owners. We, we really do value the partnership. Um, I think that it's, uh, the discussion tonight has been very, uh, is, has been a very good one. Uh, as Stefan has, um, mentioned, there are a number of questions because really it comes down to the, the devil is always in the details. It's in the, it's in the math, it's in the definitions of, of how, what are gross receipts? How is that defined? Um, what is the square footage is, et cetera. And, and quite honestly, we, uh, at least for, from a Goodman standpoint, we, the first we've seen of this was probably last week when we got notice of this hearing and, and saw the agenda. So uh, we have reviewed it, but, um, it's fairly high level in my opinion. So, uh, we look, um, you know, we look forward to the opportunity to continue to work with, uh, with the council and with the staff to, to better understand it. Um, you know, the comments around, uh, that have been made about, Goodman and other, other industrial owners, uh, wanting, understanding the need to, to be a contributor and, and to pay the fair, fair share, I think is a true one. It really comes down to where does that, you know, what is that structure? What is that amount? And, and quite honestly, it's, it's really trying to make sure, and I voice this to a number of you is it's really about, um, trying to reach a gold while continue to make sure that the city of Santa Fe Springs is competitive and, and doesn't lose businesses because we do believe that there's, there's, there's the ability to, um, contribute, but only to certain level before you start to become uncompetitive. And, um, so I think that, as I said, the devil's in the details. We look forward to have an opportunity to sit down and get, uh, additional information and maybe even give, provide some guidance on, on some different structures that might help. So we're a partner with the city. We want to continue to do that and, uh, look forward to, to having some additional conversations with, uh, with staff and, and yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Lane. Yes, we will definitely have, and, and we're not done here, but we'll definitely have another study session and we, we're going to, uh, define, uh, the different types of, of the taxing, whether it be the square footage or the receipts. So do we have any other persons wishing to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Wendy Meter.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Madam Meter. Um, I wanted to talk to specifics. We got the numbers on Friday. So I spent the afternoon running them to see what it would realistically look like for Tangram. Keeping in mind that we're in the top ten of sales tax producers, which is a huge amount of revenue coming into the city. And Ray knew how I felt about this, the additional taxing. I know all of you and I'm the face of Tangram to the council, but I've got to go back and sell this tomorrow morning to our owners. And what we're looking at here, just roughly, and I'm going to go round numbers, is currently we're at about a five hundred dollar business tax. And truthfully, yeah, that's low. I'm the first person to say way too low. But what it jumps to for us, I've ran it for all six models. It jumps to on four out of six over twenty thousand dollars. One of them up to thirty-three thousand. And that's taking the decreased amount for retail sales tax producers versus the the larger amount where it could be as high as sixty-six or a hundred and ten thousand. My guys are going to panic tomorrow when I tell them that. That's bottom line dollars to us. And as you all know, we've just opened a large office in Texas. And if you don't think Texas isn't selling them six different ways to Tuesday on taxation, they're going to look at this and go, well, then if we move all of our sales somewhere else, we'll open a smaller warehouse, ship fewer things, ship direct to site. And that's what they're going to come back to be. I want you to be aware. We want to contribute. We love the city. We love being here. It's convenient. But this is, this is really not going to fly when I go tomorrow. Do I believe? Yeah, we can go to a different amount and a more fair amount. But when I look at us versus, let's say, any other employer that's got three hundred and seventy-five employees and two hundred thousand square feet that isn't paying, paying any sales tax in. And now we're paying in the sales tax as well as this tax. And if they choose to go smaller, that's three hundred and seventy-five employees not shopping, not buying lunch in Santa Fe Springs, not getting gas. Though, those are my concerns. I just want you to be aware and we'll address it more at the second study session. Like I said, this was a down and dirty numbers that I ran and I'm going to go more in-depth with them tomorrow. But I just want everyone to be aware how we're feeling and how we've got to sell this. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. And everyone, keep in mind that this is a study session so that we can come up with resolutions and we value your ideas and your concerns. Thank you, Wendy. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, we have, uh, Stephen Mazurah via Zoom.
Thank you, Stephen. Stephen, are you there?
I'm sorry. I thought I unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Stephen Mazurah is Rexford Industrial. Um, and I think you'll remember me from the general plan process as one of the, you know, Rexford being one of the large industrial stakeholders. Uh, so this obviously would have a major, you know, impact on us, but I basically echo what Stefan and Goodman, with Golden Springs and Goodman has said that, yeah, we'd like to get more information. We haven't had enough time to really thoroughly look at this. Um, and we agree that there should be some way to find a more fair way to spread the costs across all businesses in a fair way. And recognizing that certain industrial and trucking related businesses may have more impacts and, and it's, it's okay to look at a differing, um, structure, tax structure for them. Um, but I think we just need more information, as you guys have kind of stated. We need to better understand the timing, what the next steps are when you do the next study session. What does that mean? Are you going to come back with, um, some more detailed data on the revenue, what the actual, little more certainty, what the revenue amounts are? And on that note, um, it'd be helpful to know really what the maximum amount the city's trying to get, as Stefan mentioned. And if, if you're going for ten million a year. And if, if you're going for 10 million a year, for example, but you only, but you're going to be pretty much meeting your needs in 10 years, but this is an ongoing in perpetuity, maybe you can get by with 5 million and do some bonding on that. So it might be helpful to hear a little bit more about the real projected needs for the CIP. If you can do some bonding on, on the tax revenue that you would begin, new tax revenue you'd be getting from this. And, and related to that, you know, maybe some projection, a little bit of a projection, because this, this, these taxes will grow over time, um, to some degree with new development, with growing, you know, just generally growing um sales and grocery receipts, for example, more so than the employees, which was pointed out by your consultant, that based on employees, it's not going to grow over time. So it'd be good. I think that those are just a couple of thoughts. Um, I look forward, we look forward to working with you and looking at this closer as it goes forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you. Are there any other persons wishing to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Stuart Hutchinson.
Thank you. Hi, Stuart.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good evening. Uh, Stuart Hutchinson with PS Business Parks. I, I just want to say I, I echo exactly what Stefan and Steve and Lang all said. Really, it's going to come down to more of the details and, and which way, um, which model that the city is preferring, so we can see what the impact is to, to us and our customers. I, I do get concerned about overtaxing, um, as far as, you know, we're in a good economy right now, but that can turn quickly. And uh, we really, you know, we want to see the impact for the company. But we have really enjoyed partnering, and we look forward to getting more of the details, which way the city council is looking to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any more persons wishing to speak?
Yes, one more person raised her hand, uh, by the name of Art McGah.
I'm sorry, Art?
Uh, just initial R.
Oh, R.
Oh, Rick.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so I have been uh working for the last 36 years to attract businesses to the city of Santa Fe Springs. And I, I like to, I think that I've been successful, uh, for the most part. Um, I am concerned, um, and this was, I think, uh, well-stated by Wendy Meter of Tanger, um, that this additional taxation, uh, on top of what the state of California is imposing, I think that you all may be aware of the uh new um environmental tax being imposed on industrial businesses. And um, that would initially hit the, the larger businesses. So when I look at that scale and the, the larger buildings being taxed at a higher rate than the smaller buildings, I'm afraid that that's going to have a detrimental effect on, on those larger businesses. And if you look at those larger businesses like Tanger, like McMaster Car, uh, that are the, the higher sales tax providers, and they start to look at the state taxation and the city taxation and their alternatives, I, I'm really afraid that we are going to be at a competitive disadvantage. Um, I, I understand, and I've been a part of the chambers committee, uh, to raise funds for the roads. Uh, but that model that I saw, uh, i- is concerning. And uh, I, I am afraid that those larger businesses especially, um, they, they may choose just to drive down the 10 and into Arizona. Um, it, it's a, it's a real concern of mine. And I'm glad to hear, um, Madam Mayor, that, that you're cognizant of that and Councilman Sarno. And um, I hope that we can find a equitable solution uh to this issue.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you. Mr. Foley? Sure, come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Mike Foley. And again, I think um, a lot of the people that have spoke tonight have talked about sort of the, the uh discussion that we're have going forward, which is great. I think just to step back a little bit, and I think it's important to understand is that the city and the council has made themselves available to us. The dialogue's been very transparent. Um, taxation's never something that somebody wants to take on. And the brokers like Rick and myself are really sort of in a different position. We're really not stakeholders. We're not like Lang and Stefan and some of these guys that own these properties are going to take the burden. We're promoting businesses. We're moving businesses into the city hopefully. So it's a different role. We sort of are more on your side of trying to retain people and keep them, which is, you know, it, sometimes we get sort of lumped into the business group, and we're trying to promote and continue, we'll promote city services and the benefits of being in the city. And I think it's important that we maintain the quality of services that you guys have been known for and the quality of roads and what have you. So again, we welcome the opportunity to have these study sessions, to sit down with these consultants and talk about really how to get to sort of fair. And nobody's going to be totally happy like we talked about it before, but we're going to try to, we're concerned, we're focused on getting it done and working through it. And the chamber, which I've been involved with, uh, really appreciates the relationship that we have with the city. And that is a lot of the reason that I'm here today and that we want to sort of work towards really continuing that great reputation that City of Santa Fe Springs has. So I wanted to thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Thank you for the chamber, for being here and all of our business and industrial. We appreciate all of your comments, and we've all taken notes and listened to your concerns. And we will definitely get back and have another study session so that we can come to a resolution where all of us benefit. Okay, is there anything else? Yes, come on up.
Stefan Wandel with Golden Springs again. Sorry. Uh, the Director of Finance answered one of the questions, which made me think about this. Uh, you know, i- if the city can consider a per-square-foot model, seems to me would be a whole lot simpler to manage rather than a gross revenue model, just a thought. Uh, also feels perhaps more equitable. Uh, you know, one of the options, and perhaps I'm going to share my, my lack of full understanding, uh, but one of the models seemed to address double, if not triple taxation, where the business would be taxed. The property owner, uh, when, you know, that houses that business gets taxed both from a revenue standpoint and from a square footage standpoint. So maybe my understanding is lacking, and I hope that's the case. Uh, but let's, you know, some of the models seem very complicated, seems to suggest either a double or triple taxation. Uh, and I'm not even talking about, and that's above and beyond property taxes or sales taxes. Uh, so perhaps uh square footage would be a simpler way to go, probably easier to manage, uh, less subject to, uh, you know, question or audit. Uh, so food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan.
Was uh one question on gross receipts and how that's um calculated. And I don't know if something a consultant can answer now or something we want to do later, uh, to kind of leave that as an open question.
I don't know, Eric, if you're there, the, the question regarding how would we define gross receipts, are you able to answer that question?
Yeah, I, I can sketch an answer, right? Um, generally speaking, gross receipts are the gross revenue for the business. Um, we see in the state of California typically that, that does not include um taxes that are collected and passed through on behalf. But um, it is going to include all, all of the gross receipts or gross revenues from the operation of the business. One of the limitations that local entities have in California is they can't tax net income as such, right? That's kind of reserved to the state for an income tax. And so the gross receipts is top-line uh revenue. Um, I would defer a very specific definition to further discussions and sort of the direction of the council. That is, as you noted, Travis, an area of flexibility. There is some variance across the state um as to how that's defined. There are exemptions that are both required by state law and, and constitutional law, as well as exemptions that are um sometimes written into the code. And so uh, I think I would be premature in giving a, a binding in any way definition here. That has to be part of the process with your city attorney, as well as shaping the language for the, the ballot itself. But um, I hope that's a, a useful uh gesture in that direction. I think one of the questions from Stefan was, as a business, if you're the property owner and you receive certain amounts from the uh, from, say, your, your tenants, uh, the short answer is that pretty much across the state, that's going to be included as gross receipts, unless it's a tax. Um, so if you're collecting tax and remitting that to the county, then generally speaking, that would get excluded off the top from gross receipts.
And regarding the, the question about double or trickle, triple taxation, Eric, is it correct that uh, under the model, the proposed model, the, the landlord would pay a, a gross receipts tax based on their rental income? The individual business would either pay gross receipts or a square footage, depending on the nature and size of that business?
That, that is correct. And yeah, from our perspective, that is, um, while I can see it from a, a global economic perspective, as was suggested, as double or triple taxation, um, it, you're actually, what is being taxed under business tax is the privilege of engaging in or conducting a business. And there are two separate businesses that happen to be, being conducted at that location. And so each business needs to pay its business tax. So generally speaking, it's not the same entity having the same dollars taxed twice.
I have a question. How do we do a gross receipt for a new business? So if we have a brand-new business that comes in, that doesn't have, we're assuming the gross receipts are based on businesses that are already in business for the city? Or how do we know what a new business is going to do based on the gross receipts? And then again, how do we audit that after the first year to make sure that they're not lying or cheating the system?
Eric, I don't know if you want to answer that one?
Sure, I'll, I'll be happy to take it. Um, generally speaking, um, what we find in California, and I think is recommended, sort of best practice, is you take uh estimated gross receipts for the first year. Um, that there's a true-up at the end of the first year. Um, and we take those, as Travis noted at the outset, we will initially take those as statements. Um, it's a self-reported tax. Now, uh, you can, you're going to see a lot of variability in taxes reported in first year of business. It's just the nature of a startup, uh, of a business. Um, but um, you'll see that level out, and there's typically a three-to-four-year, but kind of depending on the statute of limitations, if you wanted to go back and do some audit work and, and validate. Um, but we, you know, we, we generally find that you're, you know, businesses are, they're in the business of making money, and they report um their taxes pretty honestly um, across the state. And uh, that is, you know, that's true with the IRS. Every business declares their um income. And then obviously, it's subject to audit and, and validation elsewhere. Not sure if that answered your question, but.
Eric, I'm not sure if you heard the question, and I, I think if I, if I understand correctly, the question would be, if, if you have a, a business, let's say, that's has a, a single location that's headquartered in Santa Fe Springs, and they sell nationwide, worldwide, what revenue is, would that gross receipts include their worldwide revenue because they're headquartered in Santa Fe Springs?
Um, yeah, sort of. Uh, it would be a portion. It would be a portion to the amount of business activity occurring within the city. So you would start typically with the global revenue as, as a, the largest extent it could be. But that's not typically going to be all attributable to activity in the city. Again, what we're taxing is the business activity, and then it's measured and imposed on the gross receipts.
So it would be a similar type of answer for, say, uh, maybe a, a major corporation who has offices all over the country, who happens to also have an office here, would be the same kind of thing, the revenue would be a portion based on the level of activity here?
Yes. Yep.
I have a question. We have Fashionova, who is a multimillion-dollar company. They're here in our city, internet sales, destroy our city, streets, all that. Would they even be taxed or no? Or they get away with it because all their sales are in Vernon? I mean, they're.
No, they, they would certainly be subject to this business license tax. Um, I assume they would fall under the industrial business category, uh, where they would be taxed based on the size of the square footage of their building.
But that doesn't even compare to what their sales are. That's pennies to what their sales is. I mean, how, how could we justify that?
Well, I mean, I think.
That's where I see that, where their issue is, where that company is just putting so much wear and tear on our streets, so much is going on there. And here we got a company like Tanger, who does so much for it. It, that's where I think we can all agree that that's where we have an issue. I mean, that's where I have an issue, where we have a company like Fashionova, who's doing what they're doing, and they're not going to pair the, the fair share. And then we have Tanger here, who's, has their stuff here, and here we're, we're about to maybe lose Tanger for another state. But here, Fashionova is going to be able to do still all their business here and everything. That's, I, but I think we're all, that's my personal issue. I think that's where I have a problem with this whole thing.
Eric, I'm not sure if you want to address the categorization of industrial businesses versus retail based on gross receipts. But I, Councilmember Martin, I, um, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think our job as staff and making sure we let, navigate this thing legally is, we really, we really can't look at, we want this business to pay more because they cause problems, and this business pays less because they're a good business. That's where the legal problems come in. So it's very difficult to craft an ordinance that applies to everybody equally without having some businesses we'd prefer not to be hit as hard, or some other businesses to be hit harder, but they're not. It will be very difficult to do that. Um, you know, what we're trying to do is craft an ordinance that meets the city's financial needs without being overly burdensome. I think there were some very good points that were brought up today and by the council and the members of the, the business community. And um, you know, and we need to, to work with our consultant to see how we might be able to address some of those things.
Sure.
Having said Eric, I, because that, that is, I think, one of the, one question that could be raised in this sort of a, a model. Eric, and the, the business she's referring to is in, in a very large industrial building, let's say a couple hundred thousand square feet, uh, sells uh to the public through internet sales. Would, would we consider that an industrial business activity or retail activity?
Um, in the way that the structure currently is, it would probably get classified under the industrial, right? Um, in that industrial sector. If you note, Models, Model Five has that industrial sector taxed at a gross receipts, right? Um, one of the thought processes behind Model Six uh was simply to try to tie, because as some, I think some have commented to, tonight, and, and just as a quick aside, I mean, I, I think the comments tonight have been fantastic. I commend the, the business owners in the community that have made comments tonight. Um, I attend a few of these city council meetings and um, really can see the, the commitment that these, these businesses have to the city and, and commend them for their, their thoughtful approach. Um, but Model Six looked at, and I, I think there was one comment that indicated how high the tax rate could be under Model Six, and that's absolutely the case. Um, and it was sort of designed, in effect, that way to put um some, a significant onus on um square footage. square footage in the industrial uses as an attempt to look at how does the square footage usage correlate with some of the other need for services, right? So one of the great things about gross receipts is that it gives you tremendous flexibility. If you look at the other models, there is flexibility within, in that model. And then Model Six is just sort of a hybrid model that says, okay, let's say that square footage is more highly correlated with some of the demands and impacts on services. And so it proposes that as a way of thinking about how do you potentially differentiate the tax rates based on impact? So we can, you know, absolutely, as I think council has already indicated, very grateful for the comments and happy to look at the direction and work with staff in the direction they give us and, and looking at this further.
Thanks Eric. So, I mean, I would just use that, his analysis kind of as an example. We look at the, the business like you mentioned and we could say, well, let's just make those kinds of businesses in the retail category, make them pay by gross receipts. And we're going to have to do that with all those similar type of businesses, many of whom we might value much higher as members of our community and not want to have such a high rate applied to them. So, so those are the things that, that we're trying to balance.
I know the City of Commerce does it by employee. I don't know if you guys saw that one.
I believe we have, I, you know, when, when I think the comparisons were brought up earlier, there's, you know, there's a number of different things. When you look at other cities, aside from cities have a lot of flexibility to set whatever it is. A lot of cities, you know, a lot of these go back to the 50s, 60s and 70s. And some cities had, just have not modernized them yet. Others have modernized them and perhaps have other features in them that limit the amount. So it's hard to just look at it and, and say, this is what's going on there, but.
Sorry, City of Vernon.
Yeah.
All right, are there any other questions or any other business owners in the city that would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, I don't see any more hands raised via Zoom.
All right, and we will definitely have another study session. From what I gather, we're going to go over the definitions of these models and get into more detail at our next study session and just come up to a resolution. Any, I want everybody that's here, please come back and let us know your thoughts after we go to our next study session and do the definitions of this, these items. We all are absorbing this and trying to understand it and it's a lot.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, we'll, we'll go through the comments that were made tonight to address those. But for those watching, those in the audience, feel free to reach out to me, email me. Additional questions that may come to mind that you haven't, weren't addressed tonight. We want to make sure we incorporate all those concerns into the further work we do with our consultant and before we come back to the council.
And of course, you know, when they bring your, their questions, try to do it sooner than later. Please, I know that during the general plan, it was down to the 11th, 12th hour. So it's not fair to our staff. You guys, you know, the stress that they have to go, they have to go through in the, you know, the fact that they got to go to family, go, go back to their families back home. And you know, sometimes that stress is not fair on them. So please get that information to them as soon as possible.
Madam Mayor, I, I may suggest that we may even try to do, work with the industry group from the chamber that we had before, get some of these questions, you know, vetted through that process and bring back, you know, when we have the study session, there'll be some of that answered and you can, we can give you information from those answers. And so we can move this along as the mayor pro tem says, we do, you know, something you asked for mayor was a timeline. Now that we've actually have retained our consultants for the, the, doing the polling in the public information campaign, they do a lot of the work on those timelines and the legislative and all the things that they'll be working on. So that's the thing I want to bring back to you also with, with, with them. So I think we'll get a meeting scheduled as quickly as we can, but also try to meet in between that. And so we move this along.
Good, thank you, and thank you Travis for your presentation and thank you to Eric for his presentation. Thank you to our business community for coming here tonight and letting us know your concerns. Your concerns are our concerns, I hope you know that, so. Let's move on to closed session item number six. I would like to call upon the city attorney to read the closed session item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members and members of the audience. We have one closed session item tonight, Public Employment Government Code Section 54957B1, City Manager Evaluation.
Thank you, and we will now recess to closed sessions. We will reconvene the meeting after closed session to hear any report from closed session and to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
I would like to reconvene the meeting. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
Madam Mayor and Council, direction was given to staff and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. I would like to adjourn the meeting.